Yes. We are on the ground.
First of all, the opening of this meeting is that please note the following: All Burnersville Borough Planning Board meetings will be held in person at the Meeting Hall on the second floor of the Burnersville Municipal Building at 166 Maybrook Road. Meetings will be livestreamed on YouTube with no opportunity for public comment. Members of the public wishing to offer comments or ask questions will be required to attend meetings in person. The YouTube livestream access for all meetings is YouTube at Burnersville Borough slash wins. It's linked to all can be available on the Agenda for each meeting, which is posted on the Borough website, www.borough.org, and on the Borough Hall Public bulletin board at least forty-eight hours prior to meetings. Notice that these changes have also been been emailed to the Burnersville News and the Southern News by posting a copy on the Borough website and by filing a copy of the municipal clerk on January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five. Just the intention of the Board not to continue any matter passed eleven P M. at any regular or special meeting of the Board unless motion is passed by the members in the President to extend the later specified penalty. And same shall be announced at the opening of each meeting. In addition, the Board is not intended to get a new hearing after ten P M. or begin the testimony of a new witness at ten thirty P M. Any hearing conducted by the Board is a quasi-judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the Board may legally consider in reaching a decision. The form appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained of all kinds. Roll call.
Mr. Marco is absent. Ms. Geller present? Mr. Graham?
Here.
New board member, Mr. Malia?
Here.
Mr. Morrison?
Here.
Mr. Sasso? Mr. Sasso is going to get and he's just having some difficulty getting his face to show. Mr. Simow?
Here.
Mr. Walden?
Here.
And Mr. Desireino?
Here.
No minutes, right?
No.
Okay. Communications. We relate to one fourteen Thorne, which is the, that's the lot across the street from the Fire Mountain. And so conservation. And environmental planning. For the Land use. Is anyone here for something that's not on the agenda tonight? There are two chances to if you are. I see none. There are no resolutions. So under the business, we, this is the routine thing, we have to review and pay our bills. So, any discussion? Yeah, I'll take the motion. Oh, it's here.
Oh, it is there. I'm sorry. I moved to pay the bills, a amount nine thousand six hundred for three dollars for seven and five.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Geller? Yes, Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Malia?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Sasso?
Yes.
Mr. Sasso, could you try turning up your volume?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Simow?
Here.
Mr. West?
Yes.
And Mr. Desireino?
Yes.
Steve, we're okay with basically the default would stay, I guess, unless he did. He, he, he gave the thumb for that. We're going to, uh, I believe we've confirmed that he can hear us. We still need to confirm that we can hear him.
Can you hear me now?
Oh.
Oh.
Yes, sir.
Did we get the volume?
Wait, is that?
Isn't it your?
And you're not even speaking?
Yeah. Was it, is there this board member?
Because I think you
Can we hear you, Board Member Sasso? Can you say something so we can confirm we can hear you?
Yes, I can hear all of you. Can you hear me?
No, he can hear. And so, Mr. Chairman, we have enough of members of the Board to pass that particular motion. I'll make a determination with respect to Mr. Sasso on whether the matter is
You know. Um. Okay. Technology. Alright, so we're up to the main event, which is the, it's a whispering, very usual, um, which is Whispering Woods Public Hearing and then on But no. I think I'll do this.
Well, I think that would be better one.
Get the, want that.
It is the sweet.
We have a bar, even the Board Member Sasso does not practice the act.
Will do what you said. Alright, anyway, I am seeing the time to and I'll see it. Um, Jake can give some background and get our full sense of the
Happy to do so, Mr. Chairman, and just for the record, this is A R. Burnersville L. C. Thirty-nine, oh, we're in five more, count, what we refer to, not that not, not that is uncut, but Whispering Woods Public Hearing on the settlement of the Land Use Board litigation, uh, suing litigation post a, uh, initiative to termination. Uh, the first thing we want to do is confirm that all our board members are qualified, are consulted with our Board Secretary, that's confirmed from the issue again. Right now, I suspect that all board members on this, as well as Board Member Sasso, we hear him and he's able to hear and I still find out uh, have been present at all the hearings or listened to the reporting for any hearings they were not present for, uh, and they have all certified such as that. If you read a criminal record.
Yes. Everyone, or whatever meetings they missed, or if they weren't at any of these last year, everyone is
Certified, including any supporting them. Whatever.
Correct.
And, uh, they now have an opportunity of both of these deny are wrong, unless they know they're wrong. And hearing, you know, that's speak now, forever hold in peace, they say. So, we reconfirmed and reconfirmed again that all board members are qualified. Um, with the possible exception, where Sasso was working on the audio and the sound. Him as well. The, uh,
Does it? Oh, now.
If you can't do it without the act, we may just have to do this on board, on board. The, um, let me put this in context for everybody. Uh, the, uh, Municipal Land Use Law, a case law very clear when settlements are encouraged in land use for matters. Uh, and in fact, there's the process pursuant to, among other cases, of the most famous, for lack of a better term, is the Whispering Woods case, is a procedure for having settlements. Uh, first of all, specifically as this matter, this matter was a four, four, uh, vote for a Google, in essence, what constitutes what they're calling a statutory denial on the initial application by this applicant. Subsequently, there was a prerogative rare appeal, which is the way one does not like the result brings handle to the Superior Court, and the applicant on that statutory denial did so. We responded, there were settlement negotiations on that hand, ultimately, a settlement agreement that was unanimously approved by way of a resolution, authorizing the execution of that settlement agreement and an associated consenting. Thank you for the explanation, Martin. Uh, was in place, uh, as a reexplanation for the counsel law work of these matters. Uh, for a matter which has been appealed from the Municipal Board to the Board, can be settled while the matter is pending. Here Whispering Woods, the middle town township, two twenty, U. J. Super one, six, one, the Law Division case, and I The, um, I'm sorry, what was that? Oh, okay. The, the, um, there's also the case of Brendan Keaton, that last, um,
But wait, here we have this. We're not gonna try. That's all.
You just think you just don't back.
If it's unusual. Do you remember Sasso? So, I'm trying to watch anybody go by. Yeah. That's my view.
Not but we
As soon as it started.
That we're breaking in and fixing
So now, a lot of dollars only.
Yeah, but that's If it, if the end, if we find a stop. So, is there anything? We, I've already Sam's being held. It's hot.
We're okay now.
I I believe so.
Yeah, and also uh, members of the public brought to my attention that maybe there's the possibility we can have Board Member Sasso call in so that he could be heard uh, so long as he can hear everything. But if we can confirm he can see everything and and hear everything, which is already occurring, maybe he can telephone in and we can hear him as well. Perhaps. That doesn't work.
He can see everything from here. Who can phone?
So, once it is on I think he can, he can hear it, but maybe he can with dialing and can speak. Can, can you dial him? As well?
Dial. Go into the zoo.
Oh, yeah, you could dial him without much of that.
He can dial into the zoo.
Yeah, I think that information, D. W. is so.
Lord, I'm sorry, I'm all for having a call here.
If you'd call him and just keep him on you.
Yeah, absolutely, we're here, not for having.
I have it.
Oh, thanks.
Aaron's.
Who?
Is there a lot here?
Oh, my. Um, I got a word. Maybe you can tell what you played. Oh, there's a, there's a, we're always lying, you know? You know what I mean? I'm sorry, off for a bit. What happened? Only aren't that's the point.
Excuse.
Here.
We've done these times, Lauren.
I got
Some here. And let's develop it.
Well, while he's working, then I still have to see more pages. So I'm going to go back, please. To, to what Whispering Woods, since I know people waiting to fade it rather with the years. The, uh, so any matter that's appealed from Municipal Board, uh, may be settled by the parties pursuant to Whispering Woods, as well as Brendan Keaton, Gladstone case, and the progeny. Uh, who core elements are that any settlement is contingent on a public hearing on notice advertised to the public. The hearing solely addressed to settle. Uh, and it is followed by a public vote. Uh, and ultimately, a written resolution memorializing the determination of the Board. That's the process. Please follow me.
I have the, uh, in this particular case, I have, uh, Mr. Sasso here, now I'm gonna, um, I'll be, yeah, do you want to just meet yourself there? Thank you, thank you. Or now, somebody needs to, Board Member Sasso, you can hear us? But we hear you. He's on speaker here, he can hear us. He should be.
Yes, I can hear you.
Oh, nice. Okay, we can hear. Thank you.
You offered these.
The, uh, again, in this particular matter, uh, there was statutory denial, an appeal, ultimately, a settlement, the Board unanimously authorized the execution of the consent order. Uh, in connection with a settlement that provides for the processes under the degree of this case. That consent order, uh, with the power that is soon as reasonably practicable following the consent order that was entered by Judge Menon in the Superior Court, uh, that pursuant to which a public hearing be held in the Whispering Woods. Uh, the public hearing must be conducted, uh, openly in public for comment and the settlement proposal voted on. Uh, the Board shall by reference fully incorporate into the public hearing the record previously compiled concerning the application, including all the prior testimonials. In other words, all proceedings that took place thus far are incorporated by reference. Uh, and everybody has participated by watching and being here, prepping, uh, in, in, in public during the hearings, uh, and or uh, listening to the recordings. So this is not a redo of a prior hearing. Only those members of the Board who are present at all public hearings or who pursuant to the N. O. U. L. certifying writing to the Board, they read the transcript or listen to the recording of any public hearings on the application in which they were apt, and shall be qualified to vote on the settlement proposal. That is all eight board members, so long as we can continue, uh, to hear from Board Member Sasso and he can see and hear us. The public hearing shall be limited to considerations of the term of the settlement proposal. Again, this is the order of the Board I am reading from, public comment and word deliberations and vote. Uh, the plaintiff shall notice the public hearing consistent with the requirements of the N. O. U. L. I'll confirm that in a moment. And the Board shall consider the settlement proposal and at the conclusion of the public hearing shall vote and render a decision thereon. As reasonably, as soon as reasonably practicable, but not later than sixty days following the vote. Uh, we are required to memorialize the resolution setting forth our decision. And if the settlement proposal is approved and revolution memorializing it as such as time be adopted, uh, the plaintiff shall dismiss the litigation with prejudice never again. If the settlement proposal is not approved uh, and within the timeframe, uh, set toward, uh, a resolution memorialization, uh, then the parties are, are to promptly notify the Court and the Board will convene a case management conference, set up a briefing schedule, and the litigation will continue. Uh, so again, this was a unanimous settlement agreement on part of the Board uh, with the applicant. The settlement is the only thing that is dread in the hearing. Uh, and, uh, the only contingency is to have this hearing uh, open to the public for comment and deliberations on both. So with that, I do want to put on the record that with every application, I reviewed the notice. I found the content to be sufficient. I found it to be timely served and published. It was served like certified mail on July ten, published on July ten, both of those dates being at least, and in fact, more than ten days prior to this evening. So therefore, the Board does have jurisdiction to hear this Whispering Woods settlement presentation. And, uh, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, at the appropriate time, I'll swear all the witnesses, whether it be before or after uh, advocate's counsel, uh, makes his opening statement. If we give him the opportunity.
Okay. Yeah. Whichever, whatever is your pleasure.
Alright, well, who's content?
I just, uh, my intention at the moment is, uh, just to have Kevin Smith testify, so we'll swear him and
And raise your right hand. Uh, and Board of Trustees will raise their right hand as well, to all of you, swear to God, or affirm testimony about the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but
I do.
Thank you all. This morning, and just one more time, uh, Mr. Sasso, you can hear me? Can I hear you?
Yes.
Yes, I can. Thank you. Uh, we have eight board members qualified and, uh, ready to serve here. This Whispering Woods settlement, there is your chair. Back to you.
Where to me?
Yeah.
Alright, good evening, everyone. My name is John Witchescala. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Inglesino Taylor, uh, and it's my pleasure to be here tonight on behalf of A. R. Burnersville LLC. Uh, hard to believe, but it's been almost a year. Uh, we were last here in, uh, August of twenty twenty-four. Uh, little bit of background, uh, and I know everyone's read transcripts, but, uh, there are some new board members. Uh, brief background, my client, uh, is an affiliate entity owned by Advanced Realty Events Investors. Uh, it is a privately held and fully integrated real estate investment development and management firm. Uh, their headquarters are located about three miles from here in Bedminster, New Jersey. Uh, it is a company that was founded in nineteen seventy-nine. Uh, the company's developed over twenty million square feet of commercial space. Uh, and they have over three thousand three hundred multifamily residential units throughout the northeast region that are part of their uh, ownership, uh, portfolio. Uh, they do take pride in, uh, developing, owning and managing their real estate assets. Uh, and they particularly specialize in high-end redevelopment and revitalization projects such as the one that we are proposing here. Uh, the property that's the subject of this application is what is commonly known as the Palmer Square Site. Uh, it's located thirty-five to thirty-nine Old Cod Square, also has a street address of five Morris Town Road. Uh, it's designated as block one twenty-five, lots one, two, and three. Uh, property has been owned by the Palmer family dating back to at least the nineteen thirties. Uh, it is developed currently, uh, with several commercial buildings and a large surface parking lot to the rear. Uh, back in twenty twenty-two, uh, the Borough undertook a study of this particular property to determine whether it would be deemed an area in need of redevelopment under our, uh, New Jersey local redevelopment and housing law. Before, before that terminology, uh, it was actually whether the area was blighted. It was the Blighted Area Act. Uh, they changed the name and the terminology in that regard. Uh, a study was performed by the Borough's professionals, uh, which resulted in the preparation of a, a study. The map of the area, uh, was, was prepared as well. Uh, and what that study found is that this area, this particular property constitutes an area in need of redevelopment. Um, the hearings with respect to that, when you come in for an area in need of redevelopment, there's actually a two-step process. First instance comes before the planning board for a public hearing. Uh, and then ultimately, uh, before the Council. Those hearings were held back in the summer of twenty twenty-two, about three years ago. Um, and with the ultimate determination being made that this property constitutes an area in need of redevelopment. Uh, Mayor Council adopted a, uh, formal resolution in September of twenty twenty-two uh, that made that determination. So that's the first step in the redevelopment process. Next step is looking at development of a redevelopment plan that's under the redevelopment law. Uh, in that regard, the municipality's professionals, uh, again, prepared a redevelopment plan. And what that redevelopment plan really is, it's, it's a zoning ordinance that pertains specifically to this piece of property that the town is looking to see, to have redeveloped, to have revitalized, et cetera. Um, that redevelopment plan was a collaborative effort. Uh, significant consideration went into it, uh, in terms of uh, coming up with redevelopment standards, residential density, which was originally set at sixty-eight units. Commercial, there was a desire to have, you know, first floor commercial. That redevelopment plan, as it was designed, established a minimum of eight thousand square feet of, you know, ground floor space. Uh, you know, for retail, commercial, uh, purposes. Uh, it hit on, uh, it provided for the parking standards, provided for building heights, it provided for setbacks and things of, of that nature. Uh, remember redevelopment plan, redevelopment area designation twenty twenty-two, redevelopment plan doesn't come in until twenty twenty-three. So there's a fair amount of time that was spent relative to, to the development of, of that plan. Uh, March twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three, uh, Borough Council introduced ordinance twenty twenty-three nineteen sixty, and that's what introduced this redevelopment plan for the Palmer Square Site. Uh, and what, again, what it proposed was for the development of a mixed-use community on the subject property, permitting sixty-eight residential units, uh, and again, a minimum of eight thousand square feet of, um, of ground floor space. Uh, during the pendency of that, uh, concept plans largely similar to the, to the plan that we have before you were released with part of the public vetting process. Uh, back on April thirteenth, this very Board reviewed that, uh, April thirteenth of twenty twenty-three, this Board reviewed uh, that redevelopment plan, uh, part of your usual process when you review zoning ordinance, you determine is it consistent with the master plan, and there was a master plan consistency determination made. Uh, the ordinance came back to the Council. Public hearing, second reading, uh, on notice, published, et cetera. And the Borough Council adopted the ordinance, uh, which adopted the redevelopment plan. Thereafter, A. R. Burnersville was designated as the, uh, as the redeveloper of this particular site. Um, and in August of twenty twenty-three, there was actually redevelopment agreement that was entered into between the Borough and A. R. Burnersville. What's a redevelopment agreement? It's basically a contract. Um, uh, you have an entitlement to build the project, but you, you have to build it according to, you know, the requirements. So what do we have? We, we really have a contractual obligation to proceed with this, uh, with this redevelopment. Uh, and among those obligations, uh, and, and there are numerous terms and conditions that are in that redevelopment agreement. Was approved at a public hearing, had to be approved by a resolution before, uh, Borough Council could sign off on it. Uh, but it set forth, you know, what the obligations are, and there's mutual obligations and, and cooperation provisions between Borough and, and the redevelopment here or in any other project. Uh, obligations to, to construct the project, all the associated improvements, obligations to afford the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, uh, requirements that are contained in there. Uh, and otherwise, just to see this project come to, to fruition, fruition, and, and revitalize this particular site. Uh, we filed this site plan application, uh, on September twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. So we were we were signed the redevelopment agreement. We had our contractual rights, so we filed that application, seeking preliminary final site plan approval for the project. At that time, again, sixty-eight residential units and about nine thousand two hundred thirty square feet of commercial space. So we actually complied and actually exceeded what, what the minimum was, uh, relative to that, uh, that first floor, uh, commercial space. And we came up with a project that, uh, you know, saw to, to the vision that was consistent with, with that, which had been presented, you know, throughout this deliberative redevelopment plan process. Uh, we had our first public hearing in this room, uh, back on February eighth, twenty We had our first public hearing in this room back on February eighth, two thousand twenty four. And thereafter, we had six more public hearings. Over the course of those seven public hearings, we did receive significant feedback from this board and from the public. And candidly, a lot of those comments. Really did improve the project. A lot of the suggestions that were made, optimizations, as, as we, we discussed at numerous meetings. We did significant modifications to the, to the loading zone that would allow for multiple vehicles to get into the building. And, you know, whether it was the Amazon deliveries or, or larger vehicles that could get in without blocking traffic, et cetera. We increased setbacks, greater setbacks to Mars Town Road. I think that was a Mr. Semeloff had suggested that along the way. We did a better mix of unit types. We ended up with less three bedroom units. We enhanced fire safety measures. Throughout, and we also improved on architectural. We received architectural comments along the line, along the way. That, that I think in landscaping enhancements as well, that, that really improved the project. We articulated all the benefits of proceeding with the project, which was the vision of the Borough Council when it embarked on the redevelopment journey back in two thousand twenty two. Hearings and public comments were completed on August fifteenth, two thousand twenty four. We spent a substantial amount of time, as the board may recall, at the end of that hearing, and actually at the end of the July hearing, talking about. Conditions of approval, and, you know, we, and we ended up somewhere with about a hundred some odd conditions. Significant number of conditions. I've been doing this for a while. I've never seen that many number of conditions, particularly on a redevelopment project. You know, where there was a plan, but, but it was important certainly to this board and public and so forth. So, you know, we agreed to those, as Mr. Warner said earlier, we ended up with a four-four vote, which is a statutory denial. We filed, filed an appeal, didn't want to file an appeal, but, but that is the means and mechanism. Certainly, we are hopeful we can reach a point, and we're always looking as, as supports and courage and. You know, to, to achieve a settlement in this regard, and, and that's, that's where we are presently. This is a Whispering Woods hearing. As Warner said, we, anytime you have a settlement under that Whispering Woods case law. It has to come before the public to present the settlement and the opportunity for discussions. So, so in terms of settlement itself, all the documents are on file, but, you know, there were a number of points that, that we looked at. Relative to, to settling this case. And I'm just going to run through them briefly. I'm not going to read it verbatim, but, you know, in the first instance, it was please provide the D O T approval. The proposed sightlines for exiting from primary driveway on Mars Town Road. Alternatively, D O T could say they're going to lower the speed limits, which would shrink the sightlines and allow approval, et cetera. Since the outset, with respect to this application, we've known we've got D O T jurisdiction. They ultimately make the determinations regarding sightlines with the speed of the roadway through there. We have, and as we indicated, the applicant would agree to modify the application for the NJ D O T major access permit. To comply with all terms and conditions required by NJ D O T in the issuance of a major access permit. And that permit would actually be conclusive evidence that we have satisfied the obligations regarding sightlines. We have been submitted at, at D O T. We are still actively working with D O T. And we have agreed that we will continue to provide the municipality. Going forward with copies of, of any submittals and any responses we get from D O T regarding the permit itself. There's also a comment regarding providing the NJ D O T approved right of way line on Mars Town Road, including Old Hot Square. It's really a surveying matter. And we will submit a revised signed and sealed survey confirming that the red light way line that's shown there. Is consistent with the applicable NJ D O T general property parcel map cited in the title report. We actually have that survey, so we are in a position to submit it, and of course, it'd be subject to. To review and so forth by Mr. Brightley, and I guess perhaps Mr. Trautman as well. I don't know if you hear this, he's not here this evening, but I know he's your, your traffic consultant. We talked about, we had a fair amount of discussion. There are conditions that pertain to. If this project is approved, what's going to happen during construction, concerns over construction staging, phasing, et cetera. We had a number of, of responses in that regard that are in the settlement agreement. That we're going to prepare construction, phasing, traffic control plans. We're going to work with your construction department, your police department, the D O T Somerset County Planning Board and Engineering Departments to work through those. We're going to incorporate those procedures during construction to facilitate immediate accommodation of construction vehicles within the site. We certainly wouldn't want to be in a situation where we are blocking traffic through that, through that stretch of road. Prohibitions against vehicles idling. No queuing of vehicles on the public roads, you know, unless approved by Somerset County, the D O T during construction. Pickup, construction materials, debris, things of that nature, keeping the site clean. Having a lay down area on the site so that, you know, the materials are on the site, you know, not sitting out on a roadway. And, and that basically everything is, is secure. Building and maintaining mesh screening as well, and some sort of decorative during the period, you know. Screening along the, the frontage during the period of construction. So it doesn't just look like a big construction site going forward. And probably the most significant, you know, item, just relative to plans, goes to, to our architectural plans. Suggestion was made, request was made. That we, we reduce the height portion of the building along that, that westerly facade. Really just to soften it, so it didn't look like four stories above for the pedestrians walking through there. And, and we were more than happy to, to make that, those revisions to accommodate that reduction. By bringing that down, we lost one unit. So the plan as it presently stands is, is sixty seven units, sixty eight units. And, and again, we still have the, the same amount of square footage, which is about nine thousand square feet of, of commercial space itself. Relative tonight, we did make the planner, our plan submittals. And I know I can see some of the board members have a site plan. What I'll tell you about the site plan, it, it really is the last version of the site plan that we had, because the modifications didn't change the. The physical layout of the site. It's really the architectural layout. All we did with respect to those plans is to modify that unit count, even the bulk chart and so forth. We still maintain the same amount of parking that we had previously. And, and other than that, we have the architectural plans, and they have been revised. To reflect those, those facade changes and, and building changes. That, that are along that, that westerly building. And so, you know, really, that is, those are the terms of the settlement. I have one witness, Mr. Smith, who I'm going to have get up and speak to those architectural plan changes. And then we'll just take it from now.
Here, just one quick question if I may, for counsel, to give the applicant, length of. The settlement also confirms that the maintenance of all. Prior conditions stipulated to during the hearings.
Yes, yes, I'm, 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 Mr. Warner, I'm glad you brought that up because I turned my page too quickly. We are going to agree to, to all terms and conditions. Although I do want to clarify that relative to items, emergency generators, et cetera. What we are going to do is going to comply with the redevelopment plan as adopted. Relative to any terms or conditions in that regard, which do relate back to the Uniform Commercial Code and those requirements.
Now, that, that's all I thought.
Yeah, no, I miss, I, I appreciate that, Mr. Warner.
entirety of the settlement terms we set forth, I didn't want anything to do with that. That was an important one. It was at least a hundred, as I recall.
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Okay, well then, we're, we're ready for your first question.
So, Mr. Smith, I know you, you've been sworn in, stand for real, we'll do whatever you're going to do. You've been previously qualified as, as an architect, as our, as our expert witness chairman. Would you like me to have him go back through or just come to arm that your license is still in good standing?
The state of New Jersey, yes.
All right, terrific. So, Mr. Smith, you've been involved, obviously, in the, in the overall design with respect to this project from the outset, correct?
That is right.
I see we have the rendering that was prepared by your office. Still remains the rendering, the design of the building, correct?
That is correct.
We made some modifications to the plans as a result of the settlement agreement. And I'm just going to turn the floor over to you to, to walk us through those changes and. And elaborate on anything that I think is important for the board and the public to know.
Just one item, is this a new exhibit? And if so, will?
Not a new exhibit. That is the, that is the rendering, and I will confess, I don't know what it was marked as evidence, but it was. What's that? A five? It may be a five.
You know, any, any problem with marking it A one for this proceeding?
That would be perfect, yeah.
I was just telling, yep.
So why don't you just explain what A one is, since you have it up there, Paul, bring it back up and just explain what it is and what our viewpoint is and so forth. I know this doesn't go to the changes, but give an overview.
So this is looking across Old Cod Square. Reconstructed Palmer Building. Rest of the development. Retail space. Called out with awnings along the entire length of the old Old Cod Square project. And they're really effectively, with the changes, this is what people see, the changes don't, don't affect this view. But what little there is is having to be behind the tree there. So I would go on to.
Yeah, please, yeah, go on.
Just show you. In, in person, this is the elevation as originally presented. This is, this is a before.
Do you need to mark this? Or this is, this is submitted, this is in the plan set, correct?
Is this made with the new plan set?
Just mark it.
Why don't we just mark it? Let's mark it as exhibit eight two. Explain what it is, if you can give the date. There we go. See the date up there on it. Just explain it to them.
So this, this is what had been presented. The last time we were before, before you all, and. As you may recall, some of the, the, the shape of the thing is different. About the mountain area road also contains the parking entrance. We had changed the shape of that a year, a year ago to get a vote for in response to some of the. The comments from, from the commission and from others. And if you go to the next.
Now, before you do that, just drag them out, whoever's been told this. Drag a mouse over to the center. On the peak, the right peak of the center, there, just notice, for the audience, just notice that section. And then drag it down. Right there, and notice that section as well, as, as the before. Elements that now flow into the next drawing.
That we get.
For the record, eight two, we have a revised date on that and a sheet number, so we have records. The one that.
Eight two, go back, go back, one, just, let's get the date on it.
Yeah, we do, gotta make sure we get a good record.
Yes, last revision, June twenty seven, twenty twenty four.
Eight two is what?
It says last revision. June twenty, June twenty seven, twenty twenty four, planning board hearing submission.
Is that, is that correct from the witness?
Is that correct? You got, you got an answer. Yeah, yeah, we're not.
Yes.
And this is revised set of elevations. Show the reduction of height and.
So this is, so this is just confirming, this last revision date was six twenty seven, two thousand twenty four. That's exhibit eight two, correct, Paul?
Yeah, eight two is, is a sick sheet. Date is six twenty seven, this is not.
No, this is not eight two, I'm just.
It was a new one.
This is the new one, too. This is the new one that should be dated.
So we call this, this is, this is actually what's in our plan set. This is a part of your package. Just for the record, why, why don't we just call it eight three?
Yeah. This is a.
The old one, okay, this is the old one.
This is the old one.
You're ready for the next sheet, Paul?
They can move them side by side, too. If you did it the way before, you just went click, click, and you could actually see the change.
Yeah, let's, let's, we want to come identify first, and then you can have a record, and then if you put them side by side, please, thank you.
This is eight three.
That's correct. This one is eight three.
Revised. Elevation set. Provisions to the best elevation.
And the date?
Six twenty.
I'll say we didn't. Looks like there's not a new revised by date, but that is the revised by date, or this is the revised plan as submitted with the documents, correct?
That is correct. It still has the same all day, is that it?
Yep. Has the same, has the same, has the same day. I always got revised by date first. Yep. All right, so walk us through it. Please, please explain it so the public understands what's going on in the board as well.
So that same element, thank you. Chairman for pointing it out, is dropped by an entire, by a full floor. I'll show you the plan, ramifications of that. And in general, the eve line of the bottom of the gamble is actually. Roughly similar to the eve line of the Palmerville to itself. So it kind of follows, follows the street, that area as it goes downhill toward the village.
And I think what.
You get some softening when you're coming. From, from south up, up, up Mary Road.
Up Mary Street.
You see that.
And as a result of this change, basically the modification where it's sixty seven units doesn't otherwise alter, you know, the, the site plan itself or the, the other. Except for interior layouts, correct?
And we have, we have those in our set. The resulting plan changes, the loss of that unit, the configuration of that area.
And the parking remained the same.
Same.
Same hundred and thirty four spaces.
Right.
And that's it. And Paul, I know you were doing it, again, just, you could probably show it. So before, after, okay?
Okay. Well then, Steve, basically, we can have, there's only one witness. So we can have questions of the witness. From the.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's Whispering Wood. You told me. What? Did, did, is it direct included or is it?
Uh, it's, yes. Yes.
Okay, and the, the board can ask questions if they have any, members of the public can ask questions if they have any. And then. If that's the last witness, then members of the public may comment, the board can be a great. And vote on the. Well, he certainly has the option to make a summation.
After public question?
After comment.
Are there any questions right now from the board for this one?
And, and the questions are. Not limited just to the testimony this witness, but with respect to the nominee settlement, but.
not limited just to the testimony this witness, but with respect to the document, but everything that's been presented, you can be a settlement seat.
Okay, then everything related to the settlement. But not the hundred thing, you know, that's, well, I guess that's in the settlement.
Well, no, no, the old stuff is not, go back over again, yeah, the new stuff is that nothing virtually all one hundreds remain, and then there's the new change.
I have a question about submissions to DOT, what's been submitted? There was a, there was a report from DOT to give to us in the spirit last year. Has that been taken since then?
There've been some middle sense, you know what, I'll, I'll ask Mr. Corack just to address that.
Mr. Mark, please raise your right hand. You swear to God, our current testimony about the game is the truth, the whole proof of the truth.
I do.
Thank you, and I apologize for forgetting, but the council.
You've been qualified previously as a, as an engineer, as our traffic engineer, your licenses are still in good standing, Mr. Corack. You should off just, if you want a clarification on where we are with DOT, what submittals have been made. All that were in the VP process, if you could just provide an answer.
Most recent submission that we have to see. On this year. That was two of his last comments from DOT made on the seventh and twelve. Or which in turn were based on our submission by twenty second.
And we will be providing the survey, the submittals, and any responses as well to the board.
But there's been one submission since the last, since the vote.
All right, are there any, we're gonna take questions for, this chairman doesn't clarify every day, oh, it's all right.
The standard, the paragraph, standard review, says you have ninety days to respond. Otherwise, the application is automatically withdrawn. Did you, did that extend?
Been in coordination throughout the process. To confirm that the application is still, is.
Okay, so this is probably inside of said, if the public's concerned, but there's a national fair where you can come down and you can ask questions. They have to be in the form of questions, there'll be a separate section where we have a public, where public comment, basically can state your comments and concerns. So if there are any, if there's anyone in the public that has a question that has to these two witnesses, please come down and.
The, the, just give your name and address, and then you can answer direct questions.
I'm Al Lacata, I live in Bassam Ridge, I'm a member of the Masons Lodge, right here in downtown Burnsville. A question to the gentleman who just gave testimony earlier, the engineer, where's the parking gonna be located in there? The park, you say, yes.
Parking is under, is underneath the building.
Oh, so you're blasting underground?
We're digging.
Digging, okay. Thank you, that's my question.
Since you're here.
Yes, sir.
We tried reaching out to you to make sure that you're aware that your current lease of the cell tower is on the launch. Will be impacted by the selling.
Uh, we're, this is the first we're hearing of it.
Yeah, I know, well, you're kind, it's kind of hard to.
Yeah, but we'll strongly object to that, yeah.
You should, I don't know what the condition of that is, you should take it to your members or whatever, just sort of figure out what they're likely gonna do with that.
Was that letter sent by registered mail?
No.
I wanted a question?
No.
We have a cell tower.
It's part of our, it's part of our settlement. Turned you, or the record up.
Yep, yep. The, the, the.
You were noticed, yes.
The chairman did open it up. It's not part of the settlement.
No.
Whatever out, you have outside vis a vis contractually or otherwise, there's other parties, speak to your council and figure it out.
Right.
You just said it does. You're on the record by saying it does. Yeah, I think, I think, you know, in all fairness, I mean, you're talking to a nonprofit that needs maybe once, twice a month.
Sir, I'll swear it for later.
Okay, I'll tell you that, that's fine. All right, my question was the underground parking, thank you so much, I'll go back for public comment.
Thank you.
Appreciate dumping, you know, the two fifty dash one for power running. My question is to go back to the other picture, the first picture with the flagpole.
The office.
Yes, that doesn't seem to be to scale.
Exhibit.
What, is that?
Exhibit A1, correct? Now, thank you, please proceed with your question.
My question is, is that to scale? I don't think that the flagpole is gonna be higher than the building. It just seems like every day it's out, it's just water. Is that, is that to scale? Okay, is that to scale? And what is, what is the hidden building relative to the flag?
Yeah, the, the drawing is to scale, but because the flagpole is somewhat closer to you, it looks taller than the building.
So it's, so the question is, is the flagpole taller or less?
It is less taller.
By how much?
Don't know, but I know there's less.
How many, how many, how many stories? Is it two stories high, is it three stories high? Can you tell me that?
Twenty one was approximately three stories higher.
Any other question, we're either.
Kathleen Shepherd, sixteen Amber Place. In New Jersey, oh, seven nineteen four. Otherwise known as Burnsville. I would like to hear how are they dealing with the, I live off the Amber, I live on Amber, which is off of Mount Aerie.
Yeah.
I'm vitally interested in knowing how they're going to do the traffic. What they're going to do to allow us to even get into town and out, and what if that doesn't work? I mean, what if we started and on day ten, it just doesn't work, what happens? We all have to suffer the consequence of it?
Your, your question there is about the traffic, right?
It's very important.
No, we understand, but it's just questions now, they, I get to direct the question to them, and they have to answer the question, I think that.
Well, we had, I'll respond, because we had extensive tra- traffic testimony throughout the seven hearings that we had back in twenty twenty four. Property is zoned, there's a redevelopment plan that allows for a density of sixty eight units, whereas sixty seven units. And, you know, with the commercial space as well, but certainly all of our traffic testimony is in. We're not providing any supplementary traffic testimony in this regard. Whole record and everything that was, was in previously is all incorporated into the.
So I can't get.
It's okay, it's okay, look, we don't, we're not very hewist to this area. And so, so the, Mr.
I can get first.
Councillors, councillors' statement is correct and in accordance with the consent order for prior proceedings of the court of justice. What's hard, perhaps, for people to understand, or difficult to deal with, perhaps, is that the hearing already took place. This is not a hearing on site plan application, this is a presentation of a settlement agreement, as I explained at the beginning, but I'll reiterate and clarify for everyone, so.
I'd like to, I'd like to help away, you know, on your particular location. Everyone aware of that?
Yes.
Historically, that lot used to have traffic that came in and out of the driveway that is on Mount Aerie, of course, it doesn't anymore, but it used to have traffic there. That traffic would directly contributed to backup, if you're accustomed to seeing in Amber. There is not, that is not there today, in this plan, the applicant has taken that entrance and turned it into a loading entrance where trucks pull in to the underground and pull out according to some truck, the trucking delivery schedules. So in terms of the backup, from Amber Road to the center.
Amber.
Amber. You should see no impact. Now, the traffic study, it's not gonna get, it's terrible.
It's gonna get worse.
Well, no, it won't. And the traffic study said it won't get worse.
Gee, if it does get worse, then I guess we have to be up to that, it would get trapped.
Then like anything else, and what you should already be doing, because it's terrible. And you should be talking to the police department and having them work proactively with DOT, you as a witness, Mr. Chairman. But both respect.
This is a settlement. And it would not be appropriate for the board to render any respect issues. It's, so.
The simple answer was the traffic study showed that there would be minimal, but no impact on your particular.
See this traffic study, or are you putting these, some, where all citizens can see, where would that be?
They're all on file with Missful Cruz.
And you said the website.
I know the website.
You can find the plan section here.
And are you talking about the driveway into this area that's being developed?
No. I'm talking about the driveway, what you're concerned about is traffic from your location. Right, which is off Mount Aerie.
Yes.
Okay, you're located, you're trapped, that's severely backed up, and I'm sorry, but that traffic is not impacted by this development. Because there are no cars going in and out of that driveway anymore, if anything, it's improved.
I'd like to know what you're talking about, when you say that driveway, is that where the parking lot is?
It's the, where the driveway behind the Palmer Building.
Chairman, I'm gonna reiterate my advice for the board, that what's occurring right now is improper. And that what should occur is that the prior hearings were incorporated by the, this is a presentation of four or five additional settlement items, modifications, conditions. And not be rehearing, and certainly board members should not be rendering opinions as to traffic or anything else, that's not improper, not proper.
The record.
Could I ask?
My legal advice is that we proceed with the, some, proceed, a presentation in accordance with Whispering Woods case. And stay within the parameters of our jurisdiction legally as a planning.
Could I ask a question about the gentleman that couldn't give a report from the DOT? Don't we have somebody?
He testified regarding her, a submission back and forth, you can ask a question, and I'll give him that, yes, that was enough, we did.
Could you elaborate on that, please? So what you are to be answering and finding out, I'm sorry.
The process with the NJDOT is that whenever you, looking to locate a new driveway to a New Jersey state, you have to apply for some access. As part of that access permit review process, the DOT reviews plans, they review reports. They review more than just traffic, they review drainage, they review utility connections, they review anything that could have an impact to their road system. And then issue an applicant a comment letter that basically provides a list of comments of changes that they're requesting or more information needed. That's not uncommon for that before, comment letter, responding to the comment letter, additional comments. It's not uncommon to have to go several. And so what I was testifying to before, Mr. Simlaw, was acting for the latest in terms of our progress with the DOT. During submission, in terms of when things were submitted, the DOT responded. That is the answer that I gave to the board. And the DOT application is very much still here. But that can run concurrently with me this application, and you don't foresee anything significant hurdle with the DOT to receive that access from them, which would be conditioned of approval from.
And that's the main driveway you're talking about, because on the two oh two, which is the state highway, it's the main driveway into the garage.
Yes.
When, so how much of the delay, or there will be movement?
Yeah, the impacts to traffic do not rise to that level of significant impact. Bare minimum dangers to delays.
One more question about the submission.
I don't think I have another thing to say, except who started this whole thing?
We'll swear again, major public comments, but it has the weight of testimony just like this. I'll, I'll swear again. The driveway in two oh two. Before we turn your presentation, we're suited. I'm sorry, I can, we can, some of us.
I'll, I'll just object, because what we've said is, we're gonna make the, we've made a submittal. We will provide copies, we're not here to provide more testimony regarding DOT, the DOT permit, other than to say as we did, as we have an settlement agreement, we will buy with the DOT, they have jurisdiction. And if there's something, if they don't agree with it, then we either need to modify it, we may have to come back to the board if the DOT says, no, you can't do this, or you have to do that, it depends, but we're not here to provide more testimony regarding, regarding traffic, we had seven hearings in this regard, we've made a submittal, and we will continue to provide copies, Mr. Simlaw, to, to.
Give a board.
We were, we were led to believe that we would be copying our submissions.
Yes, and you will be.
But they were made.
Right, and we, and we're having a Whispering Woods here, hearing now, to determine this, this settlement. So with that, we will provide copies of everything, surveys, et cetera. And you certainly have, you have Mr. Trautman, is your traffic consultant, to review same as well.
Okay, any other question, question from the public? Okay, seeing none, none for the board, none. So, so, and none from our professionals. All right, so next would be public comments, public comment, and then maybe deliberation, but, okay. So now, slightly different from that, we're opening it to public comment, I. If you can be concise, if you agree with some prior public comments, say you agree with a total of the comment or disagree. As opposed to rehashing everything in the comment, because it's, we want to be respectful of people's time. But please, it's now public comment, you'll be sworn.
I'll swear everybody in, and then the chairman, he said, the law requires the board to make sure that there's not repetition, et cetera. So who's due this, tell the people's comment, and it's the same.
Just say that the same. Okay, so, so for the public comment now. Whoever would like to make public comments, her face. Paul, can you just give your name and address?
Peter Robert Colatarci, eight Dunbridge Lane, Joliet, New Jersey, please raise your right hand, you swear to God, our current testimony about the game is true, the whole proof of the. So, thank you, please proceed.
Please follow that.
Colatarci, C-O-L-A-T-A-R-C-I.
And your last one?
Eight Dunbridge, D-W-N-B-R-I-D-G-G. In Joliet.
Thank you.
Members of board, I'm here. Friend Al Lacata, I am the incoming president of the Nasonic Lodge at, well, about fifteen Morris Town Road. You know, we've been watching this development from afar, well, not that far, since we're right next to you. But, you know, with, with great interest and. frankly, great concern, uh, especially as you just mentioned a few minutes ago. That there is going to be, uh, disruption to a significant source of income to our lodge. Uh, you know, in addition, we're also very concerned about the traffic patterns, not around the, uh, you know, within Route two oh two, Mount Airy Road, that's your guys' business, but more, uh, between the buildings and underneath the building and how that traffic is going to get in there and get out, given that our building, which is, I don't know, what, a hundred and ten, fifteen years old. Um, is a matter of a couple of feet from, uh, what appears to be some pretty significant construction. So uh, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Al. I've got some more to talk about.
Where, where again, you swear to God, affirm testimony about the given truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Hi there. Thank you, please, uh, and just give your address again.
I'm Al Licata with the Mason's Lodge, fifteen North Town Road. Um, for the record, I'm the former mayor of Berners Township. Also the former chair of the Quarry Task Force in Berners Township. And also, I was born and raised here in Bernersville. I lived on Claremont Road, Ann Street, Bernard's Avenue, and on Meeker Road, just to put things in perspective. Um, had we known earlier, uh, about the weight of what you just brought up, we would have been here much earlier. Um, we didn't, we have no objection to the redevelopment. We have no, no question about that at all. We think that's great for the town. You know, if, if that's what your governing body wants to do, that's fine with us. One concern that came to mind was the parking in this town, which just raised it to our attention that the parking is gonna be underground, they're gonna be digging. Our building was built in nineteen ten as a church. The Masons bought it eight years later, meaning we're probably one of the oldest tenants next to the Palmer's in downtown Bernersville, maybe. I have to go back and ask some of my relatives, some of them who owned businesses in the center of town. We're concerned with that heavy equipment digging. This is a stone and mason, uh, mortar building. We've invested significant dollars doing the roof, the exterior of the building. We've been a good community partner for over one hundred years, and we're here today saying they're gonna be blasting perhaps, or heavy excavation within feet of an historic building, within feet. Feet. Growing up on Claremont Road, Ann Street, uh, Bernard's Avenue in particular. I grew up when the quarry was in full operation. You know, you'd hear the siren go off for some of you that are younger. I'm not gonna date myself, but I'm kinda dating myself. You know, it was not uncommon after the whistle blew that the boom would go off. Minutes later, you'd see cracks in your walls, cracks in your ceilings, things would fall off the shelves, out of the cabinets. It was just something that, you know, we expected back in the, the day, that was just part of life in Bernersville. Um, the, the fringes were great, uh, great tenants. Um, but that's what we dealt with. Here, we've got one hundred and fifteen year old building that will not survive heavy construction. Now, look, I've had my years in as the chair of the Quarry Task Force where I dealt with ordinance blasting, heavy equipment moving, dealing with residents complaining about cracks in their buildings, in their foundations, and in their, their structures along the back end of the quarry. That's more than a quarter mile away. We are feet away, feet. To get to this point to settlement, and maybe you sent me a letter or two, but as mayor of Basking Ridge, we'd make sure if we didn't hear from somebody when a major construction project was going on, we went and knocked on their door, we made sure we got a hold of the residents to let them know what was going on. Now, I don't mean to chastise you guys, you're at settlement, this is what you guys gotta do. I'm hoping you're not pushing a lawsuit onto other people because that's just not fair, that's just not fair. You have to take in the whole, the whole situation here. We're, we're, we'd love to work with these guys, you know, and come to an amicable situation here, but you're, you're responsible for your vote. And your vote has to protect the people that have been here, that have been contributing to the community, and you have to take our concerns at heart before you vote. I don't think it's anything that we can't fix or address, but to give them a green light right now? Not right. And to bring up the fact that we might be losing our cell tower lease after we had that, and like our incoming president said, it's significant. It's significant dollars that pays the monthly bills. To lose that just like that, here, learning it here for the first time at your planning board meeting, that's a little bit of an eye opener. You can, that, that I'll be talking to my superiors when I get out of this meeting. But still, now the impact on us is even more more onerous. So I'm asking you to do your due diligence. Um, you know, there's, there is settlement contract negotiations going on. As a former mayor, it's give and take. There's no immediate deadline. Is there an immediate deadline set by the court for a settlement?
By the end of this summer, yes.
End of the summer? We've still got six weeks to come together and try to come up with a solution, six weeks.
Yeah, it'll be accurate, sixty days from the date of the order I consign that date.
Okay, but we would still have time in order to come to some kind of agreement. We're not here to put the hammer down. We're here to protect our interests and protect what's been ours for one hundred and fifteen years. So please take that into great consideration. I ask for your support on this, and let's get us in the same room and avoid these problems. Thank you.
Do you wanna respond at all to that? We were led to believe that.
Well, I, I'll say a couple of things, and, uh, I know, uh, actually during the early part of these hearings, I reached out multiple times to one of your counsel. Uh, had, had discussions, asked what the concerns were, and I forget who that was. Uh, well, I will tell you, one of my law partners is, is actually a mason as well, so I reached out to someone. I don't recall who it was, it was a while back. I, this is what I will say. First off, there's been nothing in the record regarding any impact to your cell tower or anything. Second of all, second of all. It was a statement, a statement by the chairman.
The, 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 that's, that's not the problem process, as they were giving, you know. Uh, I understand, we were all. Um, the, uh, for you. Uh, but, uh, the, the, uh, and, uh, and, yeah, the chairman made a statement, uh, that's, uh, whether it's evidential or not, it's a difference.
Now, I just, well, listen, we, we, we can't do anything that impacts the building. We're certainly gonna be sensitive, we're certainly sensitive to, to the proximity. There's an alley through there, and we will certainly meet with you. Uh, we've gotta go through the whole process, assuming the project is approved, et cetera. Uh, we've gotta have reconstruction meetings, uh, any site work, et cetera, that all gets reviewed, uh, by Mister, uh, Brightley as the, as the board's review engineer, uh, and we are certainly, you are our mixed door neighbors, so we will certainly, uh, have discussions, uh, with you. Address any comments, any concerns. If you have a point person, I do know that I reached out a number of times to all of your members who I was asked to reach out to. Um, and did not have a witness. I heard, and I forget who it was, Mister.
That's okay, you know, you're here at settlement now. I, I've been over there until I get somebody in San Diego. I think it's the engine right wing, which is like a little black, uh, black top, three foot, three foot mark. That, uh, when you finish your buildings.
But you're continuing your public.
Sure. Um, yeah, it's just, you're, the, the path that he's talking about is the town right wing, so I think a two foot eight a little path at that, right? And, um, but sir, we're, we're not here to, to cause any real problems, we're just trying to protect our interests, we're gonna work with them, and if you can delay. That's great, I'm sure we can all come to an agreement and not just take, not that he's not a untrustworthy person, but being in government, hey. I have to, to protect our interests, and if there's a way we can all come to an agreement, come here, take a vote, move on peacefully, wouldn't that be great if the communities? Uh, the neighbors got along coming out of the gate? But that's all we're asking.
They, they have an obligation to not harm your building, because they're.
I'm telling you, as the duly appointed representatives of the elected officials of this town, who you are, they're constitutional officers, aren't they?
We're appointed, I'm appointed, David.
Wait, here goes the answer.
Yeah, people who understand cell towers, there are all sorts of extra testimony happening here this evening.
But you're, you're, you're a quasi judicial board, and by su, by such, your vote matters. And you're responsible for protecting the rights of your citizens, your residents, and those people therein, and that's what I'm appealing to. They should have come to us a lot sooner, we shouldn't be here, we shouldn't be here tonight.
So you were given notice.
Again, sir, again, sir, if I had a massive project moving into my town, we made sure we reached out to those neighbors and they knew before any public hearing, and if there was a settlement going on, especially in that particular instance with a neighbor, especially a neighbor. We have, I think we even put a law on the books, the esteemed attorney to look, uh, that there has to be notifications to neighbors before any construction permits sort of been issued.
But we're not there. We certainly served notices many times regarding the hearings. We had, we had seven hearings that spanned the period between February and all.
Again, we have no problem with your redevelopment, it is the issues now with underground parking, the vibrations, the effect that'll have on our building, which is feet away. And now the loss of a potential cell tower lease, uh, complicates the matters tenfold. So we're asking that you take time, let us work this matter out.
Way beyond that.
Well, this, this chairman, I'm gonna, and I'll, I'll just start a comment. Once again, advise the board members that this is public comment, allow the public to comment. It's not debate between members of the public and members of the board. That's not what this is.
I'm gonna go to the next speaker. My name is Mary. Daniel I B, Rose R E P H. I'm at least six one. No, Harmony Road. In Bernersville.
And because, can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and not the better truth? You can all give your truth, others can give their own.
This is to the board, I just want to tell you that as a resident of Bernersville and watching this process, I think up there, the thing is we live in New York. We speak here, I moved specifically to Bernersville, because I moved specifically to Bernersville because it's safe. It was a beautiful community. I worked really hard to get here. And I'm really disappointed in this process. I'm really disappointed with how this has gone, but the outcry that I have seen from the residents that this is taking place, I know it's a done deal. I know that we put a lot of thought, I mean, the objections and the comments and what we've asked. But to take down a little tiny corner of that building and say, we're done, I think that's, that's absolutely horrible. But a lot of this is a done deal, so I just question why I'm here. But it's so that I can publicly object and let you know of my disappointment and how this whole thing has taken place, because I love this town, and I worked hard to get here, and I'm really sad to know that my people, my people representing me is ending up with this. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Jerry Boylan. Twenty eight Fulton Mountain Road, Lebanon, New Jersey. The name is, uh, last name is closely related to the Boylan House.
Can, can you please raise your right hand? You swear to God or affirm testimony about the given truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Well, exactly, you already gave.
Yes. Uh, I have been asked by the, the clan leader to come and voice our opinion on the on the loss of the Boylan House. Uh, we've already lost the, the Boylan House, the Pluckerman. And, uh, now the architecture here is gonna be gone, from what I understand, there's no uh, there's no plan to try to keep it after it was declared recently one of the top ten historical preservation needed sites in New Jersey. Uh, and they, they keep those, it, it's over two hundred years old, that house. They keep that architecture for a reason, they preserve it for a reason. If there's any way you can preserve it in any way, shape, or form, on site, off site. Uh, it would be greatly appreciated by the board, board of the clan. Thank you.
Hey, Richard.
Aaron Dunn, fifty one Crestview, Bud.
You swear to God, affirm testimony about the given truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you, please proceed.
Thank you. Um, so here for Whispering Woods hearing, I appreciate, uh, Mister Warner's, um, description of that. I just wanted to, uh, quickly read, um, from the actual opinion itself, this is, uh, two twenty NJ Super one seventy two. The public interest is always present when a municipal, municipal body settles litigation. It would be unthinkable that a planning board, for example, charged with improper enforcement of local planning and zoning ordinances denied an application only to turn around and negotiate a final binding approval of a modified form to settle the very litigation which ensued upon the denial. If such a settlement could be final and binding, that could be the hypothetical result, but it cannot be. The settlement must necessarily be conditioned upon a public hearing of the agreed plan, on the agreed plan just as if a new application were being presented to the board. So while I, um, certainly, uh, and I'm not disputing any comment was said, I just wanna make clear that, in my opinion, and for this board's consideration, that when you're, this isn't, you know, just a chance for the public to get up and vent. The board should be listening to the public and looking at this application as amended by the settlement agreement with fresh eyes. After, after hearing from the public. And, you know, as, um, Mister Wiskella stated, um, you know, there was a redevelopment, redevelopment plan put in place. That's us the zoning for, for the properties. There were redevelopment agreement pursuant to which the applicant undertook a contractual obligation to develop property in accordance with the redevelopment plan. That's not what this application does. This application uh, does not, um, accord with the plan, and that's why they're looking for variance relief. There needs to be an opportunity for this board to weigh in on what's enough weather there and title of the variance relief that they're seeking, that they need uh, under municipal land use law. And so just, I, I, I've already, um, spoken on it, um, but, uh, very, very briefly, speaking of what was not presented tonight. And you have a, a, a plan which takes one, um, small um, corner, um, element of a non-conforming five-story structure. That's the testimony of the, um, planner, Mister McDonald, on the record in this matter, um. You have a five-story non-conforming structure, and it takes one small element of it and brings it into conformity. Brings it down to the four stories that the redevelopment plan mandates as the maximum number of stories for this development. So they need a variance. Um, under New Jersey municipal land use law, C variant required, uh, C one variant, I, I already stated, has no application here. Um, this is the only lot in the redevelopment area. Um, there's no hardship, the council knew a lot of dealing with. Um, C two needs requires a balancing of benefits and detriments from the grant of the variance. The C two variance cannot sustain where merely the purpose of the property area will be advanced, rather the community must receive a benefit due to the fact that the variance represents a better zoning alternative for the property. So you're not just looking at the saving away a unit and bringing this one small aspect of the building in, into conformant, is that better than one you previously had where it was entirely non-conforming five stories? The question is, does it represent a better alternative from a planning, a zoning perspective to have a five-story, non-conforming structure? As opposed to a conforming four-story structure in accordance with the redevelopment plan? And I would respectfully submit they failed to present adequate competent evidence during the entire portion of the hearings. Um, and they failed to present any additional evidence tonight as to the benefits, the community benefits that would enter by having a five-story uh, building when a, when the redevelopment plan called for four stories. Um, so again, I think they haven't met their, their urgent proof. Uh, again, I think they haven't met their, their burden of proof. Um, and. I believe Mr. Simmoff, you know, I, I asked Mr. McDonough when he was here, you know, what is it, what is it, what does a conforming development look like? You've never seen a conforming development. They haven't showed you what a four-story conforming development looks like. We've been, Mr. Chairman stated in, in his, uh, comments, um, the problems of development all along is one story too tall. So, you know, that, there needs to be an opportunity and. I asked them tonight, I would respectfully submit, you know, for that inquiry to take place. Does this project, have they, have they carried their burden of proof of establishing through clear and competent evidence, competent credible evidence? That they've met the criteria for variance relief, five stories instead of four stories, I don't think they have. Um. So, one other, uh, quote from another, uh, this is a. Appell division case, um, in the progeny of Whispering Woods, as Mr. Warner put it, it's called a Warner Code versus Sutton.
That preceded by a quote, correct.
That's a night, I, I can give you the citation, two seventy-four NJ Super four sixty-four, an appellate division case from nineteen ninety-four, which is. Nineteen eighty-seven was Whispering Woods trial.
They still named it Whispering Woods, not a Warner hearing, didn't they?
Did it? Uh, this, this was the appellate division expanding upon, or, uh, actually. Appell divisions, uh, take on, on the, uh, question after a lot of vision, um, started off in nineteen eighty-seven. Um, and this is on page four seventy-two to four seventy-three. Municipality exercising its power delegated to it much steward must act within such delegated power and cannot go beyond them. Consequently, if municipal action is unlawful, having it incorporated into consent judgment will not read legal light until. And so. What that says to me is that if you couldn't do it originally, you can't feel about putting this down there. And so by approving the site classification through the settlement agreement, um. You would be, I would respectfully submit, uh, exceeding your, um, authority on municipal land use law. Um, as, uh, Mr. Wiskala, I, I'm actually going to take, uh. Um, issue with one of the statements, uh, Mr. Wiskala made, um, in his, um. Uh, uh, original opening statements about the, uh, commercial space requirement. Um, he said that the redevelopment plan. Had an eight thousand square foot, uh, commercial space, um, mandate, uh, not. Um, with all respect, uh. Page twenty-one of the Palmer Square Development Plan under the heading redevelopment plan details. States that the plan is, quote, uh, excuse me, I'm sorry, intended to, quote, permit the redevelopment of the property for mixed-use development. Where commercial uses occupied third floor with residential development above. There's nothing, commercial uses, uh, only a small portion of the first floor, doesn't say commercial uses. Wanting more town road, does not say whatever fraction we decide at some later date in a private agreement to be developed. Says the first law. They have, uh, two-thirds of the fourth floor, um, being occupied by residential usage, they need to use their thought. They wouldn't use variance, um, if you, if you look at the, uh, uh, talking to the land use and, uh, administration. Again, but they say that use frequencies aren't permissible in redevelopment contexts. If you want different use, you got to go back to council and get them to change the redevelopment plan. Either way, um, whether they're correct or not, can't get a use clearance here, they need to go to the zoning board adjustment. Um, same with, uh, the, um. Uh, affordable housing, um. Uh, element of the plan which, um, has not changed as I see it in the settlement agreement. Uh, the same page, twenty-one, under relevant redevelopment plan details, it states that for Palmer's where. Uh, redevelopment, the purpose and intent of the district is to allow for multifamily inclusionary development of the site. So, uh, inclusionary development is not defined by the plan itself, but the plan does say that whenever there's no defined term, look to the, um, for code. Both the Brok code and New Jersey state law on affordable housing, um, does regulate to find inclusionary development as development containing both affordable units and market rating units. Um, so, uh, again, I, I, I don't believe the variance from that, um. From that, uh, requirement in the redevelopment plan is available, um, but even if it was, uh. A land use board will be, um, the zoning board adjustment, uh, or even the council if they want to go back and try to amend the redevelopment plan. To not amend the plan or, um, enact some type of, uh. Arrangement that violates state law. And the, um. Fair Housing Act, as I mentioned, March twenty-four, um, clearly and unequivocally. States and requires that any multifamily development within the Highland region, if running the entire borough. Uh, must set aside for, uh, affordable use, twenty percent of all new resident, uh, all new units constructed. So, um. Can't do something by settling agreement that you couldn't do otherwise and you can't, um. I would respectfully submit, you can't approve a plan that violates the fair avenue. So, um, for all those reasons, I would, uh. Respectfully ask this board, um, as has already been asked to, look at the application again with, uh, with, with fresh eyes. And, uh, decide for itself whether it believes that the, um. Variance relief that are, variance relief that are requested and required for approval have been, the standards have been met. And, um, the other, um, issues that have set forth on there, um, this board, uh, has power to, um. To adopt, so thank you very much for your work, uh, on this matter. Appreciate it.
My name is Diane Bagley, oh, fifty-two, and I'm, uh, from Bernadetteville. Um, privacy or most of the.
Just like your, your else, raise your right hand.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. You swear to God or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth.
I'm going to give the most of the meetings. So I remember probably it was around December, Mr. Simmoff brought up, um. Something about the sidelines and about the, the traffic on two oh two and the. Entrance and egress from the building. I think there's only one driveway. On two oh two, so you could make a right-hand turn or left-hand turn. And, um, so. My question is, that was December and you were going to talk about. The DOT getting involved, which we have to obviously because it's the Highland. And if I understand correctly, the transportation gentleman said that something was submitted in June. So what happened between December and June? To me, it would be prudent that that's a huge, important. Factor in this large development. So why wouldn't the DOT? Why wouldn't you wait to have a settlement or something until you heard more from the DOT? And also, um, I'm not familiar with the procedure, but it, does the DOT only hear from? The client, who would be applicant, or does the DOT hear from the planning board or some of the people in the community? And that's just a question. So. I think that before you make a really firm decision about this, you have to hear from the DOT. And they have to hear it from both sides. Thank you.
Dave, did you want to, uh, no, the, the applicant, uh, after all. Might have had questions, but considering public comment areas, so, but the. To the extent the applicant, uh, who council makes a summation and maybe wishes were addressed, if you, all the comments that were made. Including those that were in the form of questions, it's incumbent on us to allow the applicant.
Do you want to summarize though, to her point, that's all, did you? It's the applicant, so does the applicant.
In summation, applicants, counsel, maybe should do that. For him to be able to decide if and when and how to use. I know it's. Our board members want to help everybody and I hope that is very obvious. It's not, we make it very clear. They want it, they want it. Um, but they do also have parameters within which they must operate as part of the judicial body. I don't expect anybody to fully understand that that means, uh, but, but, uh. But suffice to say what it means is, at times they can't help as much as they might want to. Uh, very least, so they have to do their job, listen to the evidence, allow the applicant to present. Hear from members of the public and then within the parameters that the law allows them, regular determination. Uh, and they take their advice from your board for variance. Anyway, I'm sorry for going off.
No, no, that's, that's fine. The answer is okay, physical. We just have to wait and no problems. Uh, additional comments on the topic?
Hi, Mike Stevens, uh, with the, with Bernadetteville.
Please raise your, sorry, raise. You swear to God, you were watching. You swear, you swear to God or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth. And not the better truth. I did. Thank you, please proceed.
Uh, I just want to go on record again saying I'm strongly opposed to this project, but I do applaud. The board for all your efforts, um, and everything that you've tried to do in the constraints. The attorney just said, you know, you can't do everything. Um, the council really. Stuck it to the town. Um, and I applaud you guys in, in doing everything you can. I, I, I appreciate that the one unit, um, reduction which will help. Uh, visually on Mount Airy Road, in my opinion, I wish you. The applicant would have knocked out the top row all along Route two oh two. I think this thing's going to look ridiculous. I think as people see this thing going up, just like the building next to the fire station as that thing rose. And, and when, when they start building on top of the cement there and see how tall that and how ridiculous that building's going to look. This one is going to look even, this is the center of town. It's going to look ridiculous in this town. If you had taken off another, I think, maybe five apartments from that top floor along, along Route two oh two. Probably wouldn't have been as financially appealing to you guys, but that would have made it look. Much less ridiculous. So again, I just want to. Applaud you guys for everything you've done and again, voice my strong opposition to this entire project. Thank you.
Next. Other comments?
The board to do.
I'll make the most of your, your, your portion of the air.
Second.
It, it doesn't have to be a roll call, let's go by law, David.
All right.
I believe we're up to a summation if any for the map of things, council.
Yeah, I'll just be brief. Thank you very much. Uh, I do appreciate the board's consideration in this regard. Uh, we had, uh, an extensive record with respect to this application. We've got a project. Uh, that is furthering the vision that your borough council had, um, when we. Entered into the redevelopment process, adopted a redevelopment plan for what it really is going to be a very transformative project. Uh, it's going to breathe new life into this area of town. Uh, it's going to be a different housing type. Uh, we said it before, we expect it's, it's, it's going to be available for, for young professionals, for empty nesters. Uh, and it's going to be bring people right in, more people into your downtown. Patronize your other restaurants and stores, and that's the whole purpose of redevelopment. And I know change is tough. It's just in terms of the location itself. But we did have extensive testimony as it related throughout the process through this redevelopment. You heard from our, our engineers, our architects, our traffic engineers, and you heard extensive planning testimony from Mr. McDonough. To support the requested variance relief for the deviations, uh, and he provided adequate statutory reasons. Uh, this Whispering Woods, and I heard what Mr. Duff was saying, this, this is why you have Whispering Woods hearings. For these very circumstances, uh, where there is a settlement that is available. And we bring this to, to, to you as a board and to the public as well. As it relates to the DOT, it's like, it is a very deliberative process. Uh, those are outside agencies. We're subject to their approval. We cannot control the timeframes, uh, that, that. Whether it's the DOT or the DEP or the county planning board. Uh, we're permitted under municipal land use law and the local redevelopment housing law to come in before the board. Uh, we don't do that lightly because we've got a professional traffic engineer who's looking at this and saying, no, I think the DOT. We, we've got justification here. They may very well come back with more comments. And as I said earlier. And they were to throw some curveball at us in this regard, then that's going to be our problem. Um. We can't, we can't pull building permits until we have all of our outside agency approvals and if DOT or, or any other agency bid some. Uh, impose some requirement, uh, that will require modifications or changes or prevent. Problem from an access perspective, well, then we'd have to come back before the board again. Um, so that, that is the process in that regard, but, uh. You know, it's, it's, uh, you know, we, we've been at this for a while. Uh, this is, you know, we're in year three. Uh, now in this regard, uh, and we would just respectfully request, uh, that the board, uh, grant approval, uh, of the settlement agreement. And the project, uh, with all the terms and conditions that we articulated, uh, previously and, uh, as reflected in those settlement documents. That we discussed here this evening. Uh, and once again, uh, thank the board, uh, for your time. And your professionalism.
The statement.
We did, just if I may, uh, put it in, uh, remind the board of its obligation at this point. Uh, now that the hearing has come to a close, Whispering Woods hearing that is on settlement, uh, the board, uh, did, uh, as previously mentioned. Approved this settlement contingent on public hearing, which is a requirement under Whispering Woods. Warner, these sudden or related as far as I'm, as far as I know, Warner, that is, uh, the, the, uh, and, and their progeny. Uh, but, uh, and we are in quarters with the consent order. Uh, that the council's authorized, signed by your resolution and was signed by. Determined and least the, uh, deciding judge the purpose of the prior grid delegations in this vicinity, this county and beyond this county. The, the, um, so now the settlement that we previously agreed to contingent on this public hearing. Uh, because of this public interest litigation, that's, that's, that are. Uh, then is now before you, as presented, as you've previously seen it. Uh, you've heard from the applicant with respect to the settlement. Uh, you've given the. Member, uh, members of the public in this properly noticed and open public hearing, an opportunity to add questions. And to make public comment with respect to the settlement, uh, as its modified project. Uh, now you deliberate, uh, and you vote on the settlement, uh, and as you recall, it continues to have all. The conditions that previously agreed to with one, my, uh, one exception. Uh, uh, but it is consist that the generator modification is actually, uh, we've discovered. Consistent with the adopted redevelopment plan, uh, and, uh. Though in essence, there are actually only, as we've. Uh, we're only three deviations from redevelopment plan originally, not four. Um, and then how was your. Time to deliberate and decide whether you were continual. Uh, you agree to the settlement as we, as we previously agreed.
So we deliberate, I guess.
You can deliberate, you can move second vote, you can, at some point you'll have to move second vote. Uh, before you reiterate, uh, once you do that, it's over.
I have a question for John Sabo.
Yes.
Um, given the revised plan that was submitted with the one unit law. Is this, is the southern exposure, the southern elevation now considered to be. A rear yard and therefore entitled to an extra floor according, I, according to our ordinances. By the, the plan, the, uh, development plan, they have different.
The development plan rules controls and.
Controls.
Yeah, and, and it's specific to the height and dimension and all that, so.
Anyway.
Visions for the DC zone would not be included.
Okay.
But if it's consolation, the DC zone. On a rear exposure.
Would allow.
Would have a dish arc. Or when you have a grave going down like that, it's any consolation, but it's not relevant. Uh, thank you.
I need. I want to go. Say again. Preservation of the, uh, conditions of approval was an important aspect.
Yeah, definitely. Is. The deliberation and then are there, is there a way to make comment out of vote or does yes or?
We. You can, you can make a comment now, uh, with respect and then.
And then.
Everything and then. Deliberation is, is, is your opportunity to express what you intend to do in long.
I acknowledge that, um, the, uh, generator block was out. I think the applicant needs to seriously consider the business prudence of not having an emergent, uh, not having a standby generation facility. And if they don't, they need to consider plumbing implications and the insurance implications for not having, uh, freeze protection. But I under- it's a trade off. I understand, but you do need to. Intelligently make the trade off from a business perspective and a sales perspective. We're all in it together to try to get you to, to. Uh, successfully occupy these units. Um, and. Do you know best about what will settle? And. I have separate comments on there, but I, um, have little, um. Credence in the town's consultant that described the school impact, impact of the schools. It's not your. You know, your application, but the testimony that went into that, I find. Not terrible. I had been led to believe that there was more interaction with the neighbor in regard to the fourth foot. Uh. Alleyway that's there and I, I'm sure you guys did a lot of work on, on the walls and the construction details and strength and this, you know. I remember you talking about, you know, a lot of attention being paid to that border of your property, so. Um. I was comfortable with your statements about it. I, um. The product. They were more aware of it. Um.
Yeah.
I think separately, the concept addressing of the concept of the Boilin' property and preservation issues, it's a. It's a great idea. It's just that it sounds like it's gonna have to be community driven to try to figure out. More than just, hey, come on down to the Boilin' house and get some antique artifacts for it or whatever. Um, it's, it sounds like it's gonna have to be a, a public thing because there is nothing mandated in the. Applicants, uh, in the applications do that. Um. Um, I, I, I would like to say that. In support of this restructuring process, the applicant in fact was concerned that the board was. Essentially, the, the, one of the biggest issues was that we were potentially. Considering DOT approval as part of our approval and that. Their position, which I understand was we shouldn't be doing that. It's, it's just as the applicant said, like if they can't get the permits, then they have to come back or. Whatever, and, and they certainly need them before they begin construction. I think that was the applicants. Of, of various points. That was their case. Their case was it, we should not have, um. Used it as part of our deliberations for the original, um, goal from the application. We have a slightly different opinion, but. But we understand, we understand and we realize the process and, and realize the applicant's rights and. And how that's, that's wrong. Um. Anyway, enough of their, their, you know, there's a lot of points, but. Those are the ones that came up tonight that I thought. A little more information would be helpful. I understand. Anyone else deliberation, anything?
No, I would just, I would like to say, um. Although a number of the design choices for the project for us will go apart, something that I would. Use or a number of, uh, people in the audience would, uh. Uh, like to see here or, you know, do as, uh, if they were in charge of the project, I think the developer is, um. You know, making choices that are within, uh, their rights to do, uh. Certain one, um. Although I don't believe. Some of those choices are gonna benefit downtown Burgerville. Uh, I think some of the concessions that, uh, are given and, uh, looking at, that we're looking at. Uh, kind of are gonna be the best that, uh. We can expect, um. When with the constraints that were put under with the redevelopment agreement that was approved by the town council. Um. There's certain things that, uh. We can and can do, certain things that we can suggest. Um. I think, uh. Actually, I hope the town council, uh, is listening to, uh. Us, listening to the, uh, meetings that are going on, the developer. And, uh, the people in the audience, uh, so that when other redevelopments come around. They take, uh, a little bit more interest or a little, pay a little bit more attention to some detail. Uh. That's, that's about all I got.
Um, one other, uh, point for the public to consider as, as is known in this application. The concept of parking fees is, is left. To the developer and, and in other words, this board just know. Saying that and if. And given that there's a lot of opinions about parking, but that aspect is still to be worked out with. Between the developer, yeah, and, and the council. And if you have any input on parking concerns or considerations. Beyond just the, which is they've done, complied with the, the number of spaces and things like that, but if you have anything in particular regard to. Access or, uh, fees or whatever, um, probably should make the council aware of that. It, it is in fact a. A, a known outstanding, um, statement by, uh, by the applicant that we're all agreeing is true, but. It's gonna be up to them and their, their actual implementation. So. Just. Still an option to figure to weigh in with the council. Constructively, but it's.
Okay, is anything else to? No, I just, you know, I want to see it. I believe that, you know, the terms, you know, this settlement have material impacts on completed the old plans all. Over the benefit to the.
Not. Repeat, please, media here.
So I believe that the, the terms that are in the setting, you know, material impact on improving the overall quality of the plan. In our benefit.
I actually just brought across us, appreciate the, the willingness from both sides to carry. Evidence to this point, um, because they're now looking at the iterations of. It's. And the testament to the process working.
I agree. And I, it's been exceptional and you. You should get credit for as far as we push you, you also you. You have set that our comments and optimizations and. Leverage them, um, to, to yield a better, better result. And we also want to thank you for your comments for the opportunity. Thank you.
People to know that there was significant back and forth and significant back and forth. Page to come to the settlement.
First. So. Have anything? That's. You said.
No, because the hearing said we have.
My phone doesn't hear.
Um, yeah, no, no further thought.
Okay.
You're further, you're perfect.
Buying all the way out?
Buying all the way out. Okay, thank you.
Bye, break in.
Um, then the next step would be to entertain motion.
If it's a motion to grant, it's the most, most approved settlement. Uh, that was previously approved with the contingency of the public hearing, which has now been resolved. Uh, well, the opposite, if there's, uh, no backer conditions, the settlement is the settlement. Already got a hundred more conditions in it.
I will.
I'll say it. I'm sorry. Can you clarify the motion?
To approve the settlement dated.
Thank you.
To approve the settlement dated, um. April twenty fourth? April twenty five? What's the resolution?
Yeah, that, that's what you don't need to say.
Mr. Zazariana, second. So we'll call Ms. Geller. Yes.
I'm sorry, do, uh, uh, ten.
Mr. Zazariana.
Four, right, women present. The, uh, that second was without.
That's correct.
And then actually for clarifying that on the record, please do roll.
Ms. Geller? Yes. Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Malia?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Sasso?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Stemoff?
I'm gonna abstain. The, uh, I voted no last time. I, I can't bring myself to vote yes because I don't think that the applicant has been open about their deals with the DOT. If for that reason, I'm abstaining.
Okay. Mr. Walton?
Yeah.
And Mr. Zazariana?
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Warner, just so clear, then what the next steps of the resolution?
With the consent order, designated is a revolution of the presentation. We're still having a public hearing. He, uh, is a resident on this matter. Uh, we, uh, so until the consent order, uh, within sixty days. Uh, we are required to have a revolution of a memorial station adopted by. The board in sixty days.
I think, I think you're right. Sixty days and that would reflect approval of the settlement, the project and all the conditions of approval that we incorporated, correct?
The settlement includes every.
Yes.
And so we will endeavor to memorialize actor the. By way of rest of the years and awards of termination this evening. And have it ready on advance of sixty days from tonight for the board to adopt. Sorry, I do.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Good seeing everybody.
All right, uh. Next thing from the agenda is always a heads up. About a pending. Implication. To the spending. Uh, for the, uh, thirty seven mark on the road, that's the X Bank America that takes the end of the nation.
Did you see that?
No.
It's not like.
Okay.
They speak up a little bit here.
You know, this item on the agenda is board reviews and there's a heads up about a, a new application that's surfacing. There's no. Statement about it really, other than. Um, it's intended for the, um, six of an acre lot that was where the Bank of America ATM was. Since, it's a, well, it's sixteen, it's point one six, so it's not point one six seven, but it's point one six. Anyway, was, was this team to leave yet, if you know the names?
No.
So. Yeah, so it's a heads up. Um, I have one concern and that is we just. On this lot, we just passed another application that said. Their parking would be supplied. On this lot. So the old.
Danny, well, first of all, of course, it hasn't been being completed yet. Want to stay completed or we scheduled, want to schedule, we'll hear it. Uh, and, uh, and to the extent anything has that we do prospectively by ways of, uh, perhaps. As an impact on some other, uh, but that happens. If I mean, uh, throughout, I mean, the town, state. They, 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 uh, but then, you know, we'll deal with it accordingly. If it has an impact, somebody else might have to do so.
Now, this is not gonna be an area in need of redevelopment, correct? As far as you know, this is just an applicant that's coming and saying, I'd like to develop this piece of property.
And yes, there's no applying.
Investigation or investigation or desire and certainly. And we would know about it because it would have come out first for all the hearing on an area in need of redevelopment.
That is obviously good, but they're, they're in the absence of that or normal downtown quarter zoning. Which is where this is, right? It's downtown.
Shouldn't be discussing.
No, I'm watching.
Yet, or.
If, it'll, it'll be normal. It will follow the process since likely to go in front of us versus the board of adjustment or whatever. And then as far as you know, it would be a normal application as far as we know, despite.
By normal, what you mean is the zoning order to govern it as opposed to a redevelopment plan which supersedes it.
Correct, yes. Okay, I just wanted some clarification. It wasn't a typo in this. Added informations on, on really. Uh, anyone here to discuss the matter? Then was the agenda? That didn't swing, you know. Okay, no executive session needed. Right, no executive set in the part, oh, they're not. Then.